Good morning. Welcome to the Marion County Board of Commissioners meeting. It's Wednesday, April 25th, 2018. We're in the Senator hearing room at Courthouse Square. We will begin our meeting with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. First item on our agenda is public comment. We have no one signed up for public comment. Going once, going twice. So we'll move right into our presentation, which is the Marion Pope Food Share kickoff presentation. And come on up.
Rick and Robin.
Hi.
Gordine, there you are.
I'm Gordine Ash and I'm here to introduce. And we have been doing the, I have been involved in doing the food share for 11 years. And I have organized it. And we have brought in donations for all those years. It's been great. This is my 12th year. And next year, Lisa Miller will be taking over. And she's already come alongside and doing a really great job. And we started on Monday and we will be finished next Friday, the 20th. No, May 4th. We've had one event already. Public Works has had a breakfast and they brought in $513. And so next Thursday, the 26th, we will have a breakfast here at Courthouse Square, upstairs on the 5th floor. And we expect everyone to come and eat it all up. We are having jeans days. We're having bingo. Our focus is on a competition between departments for bringing in the most pounds of food. And so we're looking forward to everybody bringing in sacks and sacks of food. And I'm here to introduce the Marion Pope Food Share people. Two of them only. Rick Gappa, he is the CEO. And Robin Kerner, who is the...
Major Gibson.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Welcome.
Thank you so much again, Rick Gappa with Marion Pope Food Share. First, I just want to say thank you that Marion County cares about the issue of hunger and has diligently said that no one should be hungry in our community and that that really matters. And you act upon that by engagement with the workforce here and to say, we can do something about it. And that is absolutely true. As you had expected in my position, I do a fair amount of public speaking. And in March, it happened to be the Rotary Food Drive Month. And I was speaking at the 10 clubs that are throughout Marion County, in Salem, up in Woodburn State, in Silverton. And I was just, I was talking about how the work impacts so many families. And I was struck this year by how many Rotarians came up to me and said, you know what? My family used a food box when we were young. And a few Rotarians came up to me and said, just a few years ago, my family used a food box or Meals on Wheels, which is another program that we run. And I mention this because the truth is, even I, as the Director of the Food Share, forget sometimes how pervasive hunger is. And I still tend to think it is other people. And the truth is, about 1 in 5 families in Marion County will access a food box this year or access food assistance. And then when we are helping children make sure that they have good food in their belly to go to school, those children are going to grow up and they're going to become our future community Rotarians. They're going to become our future Marion County employees. They're going to be throughout our community. And so when we talk about hunger, we're talking about helping to make sure that we have the community where no one goes hungry. And Marion County Food Drive has helped raise over 10,000 meals last year and it makes a difference. So I don't know if there's any questions. I just wanted to say thank you. I really appreciate that you care about the issue of hunger in our community.
Thank you. And are you going to talk at all about what you're looking for in terms of donations?
Sure.
What a dollar buys and all of that?
So there's three main ways to be engaged in the issue. One is volunteering and you can volunteer at a pantry. You can volunteer at the food share and be engaged in helping distribute food. Our model only works with volunteers. That's one way. The other way is to donate food. Donating food makes a big difference. We have a top five and they're what you would expect. Peanut butter and tuna fish. Everybody knows what to do with both of those. So it's peanut butter, tuna fish, cereal, dairy. Shelf stable is easier for food drives. But you would expect the families that we help serve and get, those are the main ingredients they want. And then baking staples. I was, we did a survey of families and that was a huge one. So food. And then of course, money. And money makes a big difference. We can turn a dollar into about three meals. And that's because what happens with the donation of money is we purchase food by bulk. So that's one thing we do with money. But the other thing it does, it helps us pay for the drivers who go literally out to every major grocery store in Marion County and picks up food. And we're very efficient with the money. 90%, literally 90% of the dollar goes straight to programs. So one program that just is amazing because of the impact is the payroll deduction or sustainer giving, the monthly giving. The state of Oregon happens to have a challenge that says $12 a month. I actually think that's a great challenge. It's meaningful, it's impactful. It helps us, it helps Marion Pope Food Share plan and establish programs and it helps hungry families get food. So if anything, I would say, become a sustainer or payroll deduction. If you have no amount in mind, pick $12 a month. If I'm undershooting that, pick whatever large number you want.
That's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Robin, would you like to add to the discussion?
I just want to share my appreciation. We're so grateful that you guys continue to show us support. Thank you so much to Gordine and the others that take the time out of their day to volunteer and to support the food drive. Thank you so much.
And I would mention, as you're doing your food drive, if there is any support that you need from the food share, we're happy to help. And Robin is the one who helps so successfully in that support. Thank you so much. Have a great food drive.
Yes. And thanks to Gordine for all of her many, many years of organizing.
But who says she gets out of it in the future? How'd that happen?
That happens when you retire, I think.
Janet, thank you for saying that. I actually wish I would have said that because, you know, we come up here and we talk about the food share, but it is Gordine and it is the other employees who say you care about this. And last year, your testimony was so much better than everything I said today. So thank you so much.
Really.
Very good. All right, we have consent items, consent agenda. You ready?
Well, I'm upset now.
What is, why? What did you, whatever?
I'm hearing Gordine's retiring. How does that happen?
You didn't know that?
No.
Are you serious?
Pardon me. All right. In spite of my problems, Madam Chair, I'd like to motion, to make a motion to approve our consent calendar this morning. First, under Business Services, we approve an order appointing Jane Beddoe to the Marion County Retirement Plans Committee. So that'll be important, maybe personally. Approve a recommendation to retitle and update classification specifications, class code 522, Chief Deputy Medical Examiner and 523 Deputy Medical Examiner. Finance, approve the quitclaim deed transferring tax foreclosed property, tax ID R326075. It's located between Wheatland Road Northeast and Broken Top Avenue Northeast in Kaiser. Approve a quitclaim deed to convey real property, tax ID number R341154. That's located at 570 Rural Avenue South in Salem. Public Works, we've seen these before. Approve an order extending the Comcast Cable franchise through June 30th of 2018. I'm told it is the last time. Receive a notice of hearings officer's decision approving administrative review variance case number 17023 Day Management Corporation. Treasurer's Office, approve a resolution eliminating the Marion County Health and Human Services Department Addiction Treatment Services Second Change Fund. That's it.
All right, so that's a motion. I will second your motion. Any comments, discussion?
I made them.
Well, just one comment on the Comcast Cable franchise. I was at the Salem City Council meeting on Monday night for the Union Gospel Mission and they extended theirs too. So I was, I knew this was coming.
Okay. And number two, I thought I saw you. I watched that on CCTV and I thought they'd made a panning shot and it was you.
Yeah, I spoke first. Yeah.
Some of the environmental issues.
So you must have come on before, after I spoke then?
Oh, well, go back and...
Yeah, yeah. All right. So all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Yes.
My friends here from the assessor's office noted it might be a wrong tax ID number on what you just read.
Okay.
I don't know how serious that is, but the one that's listed as R326075 should be R326076.
Okay, there's a typo. All right, so...
So if that changes, fine.
All right. So the tax ID number for the one that's Wheatland Road, Broken Top is a 6 at the end rather than a 5. And we will make sure that that's corrected.
I'm just stunned by the precision.
Yeah, really. Okay, so all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And those are approved. Moving to our action agenda, we have first the assessor's office, the lovely CAFSA grant. Consider a resolution approving the fiscal year 2018-19 County Assessment Function Funding Assistance Grant. We've got Tom Rolffing, Leslie Box. Good morning.
Okay, good morning, Commissioners. Leslie Box and I, I'm Tom Rolffing, Marion County Assessor. Leslie Box and I are here this morning to present the fiscal year 2018-19 County Assessment Function Funding Assistant Grant, or CAFSA, for your consideration and approval. Little background information, the 1989 legislature created this grant to mitigate the statewide deterioration of the property tax system caused by a variety of factors, including the lack of local funding. The CAFSA grant adds funding intended to help maintain a healthy property tax system at the county level. The Oregon Department of Revenue uses the grant application to allocate to each county a share of the total statewide CAFSA funding based on the budgets of all counties. The application requests information about workload, staffing, and budgeted expenditures, including capital projects for the various components of the assessment and taxation program. This includes the assessor's office, the tax office, the Board of Property Tax Appeals at the Clerk's Office, assessment and taxation support by IT, and tax distribution through the county treasurer's office. The funds available for the statewide CAFSA are derived from a percentage of interest collected on delinquent property tax accounts and from a fee on most documents that are recorded in the clerk's office. The county treasurer keeps the money intended for CAFSA in a fund referred to as the County Assessment and Taxation Fund, CATF. At the end of each fiscal quarter, the county treasurer transfers monies, including interest earned on the account from the CATF to the Department of Revenue CAFSA account with the state treasurer. The distribution of the proportional grant funds from the state to the county's general fund occurs around the 10th day of the month following the end of each fiscal quarter. Each year, the Department of Revenue looks at marketing conditions and forecasts the amount that will be deposited into the CAFSA account in the following fiscal year. By June 15th each year, the department sends a letter to each county giving an estimate of the amount the county will receive. This amount is based on the county's percentage of the total forecast. The total CAFSA funds to be distributed statewide in the fiscal year 1819 distribution are projected to be $18.3 million. This is 0% difference from last year. The certified grant expenditure for the fiscal 1819 year Actual grant revenue to Marion County is estimated at $1,050,980, or 16.5% of the expenditure amount. Hope you caught all that. It's pretty, it's pretty technical, so I tend to follow my notes each year. But are there any questions at this time?
Well, you may catch me and find that I didn't follow your technical, but I'm trying to find here, that's what I was looking at. This amount has gone down over the years. There's no record of it. It shows a little increase for next year. But what historically, if you know off the top of your head, has it been?
Right. This question comes up each year. It, the amounts, it's more that the amounts don't keep up with our budget. And I heard actually last week at JTAG that it started in 1989. It had about 35% of most counties' budgets. And now we're at, what, 16.5%?
Goodness.
It's decreased significantly.
So it isn't quite as clean. But I'm always watching for those situations where the state transfers expense to the local government, county in particular. So by not keeping up, they truly have done that.
Right.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Commissioner. The state over the last, I don't know how many years, has been siphoning off money from the funds collected by the clerk for their own purposes, which I think is stupid on their part because this helps fund schools if it's done properly. And the counties can't afford to keep up with what the state siphons off. I think somebody ought to say something to the state about it.
Should we send a copy of this tape?
Well, I know Association of Oregon Counties, when Gilroy Dell was there, continued to try to work on creative ideas about how to expand the fund. And I don't think they were ever successful in any of those ideas. Just curious, because we're a larger county relative to many of the other 36. So is it 16 and 1/2% of everybody's budget? Or is it just 16 and 1/2% of our budget?
I believe it's 16 and 1/2% of everybody's budget.
Well...
Is that...
It's 16.66% of the assessor's office budget.
Right. So what I'm saying is if you had a very small county with a very small office, their CAFSA grant may be larger, a larger proportion, right? Because their budget is smaller.
So I think a greater percentage of the revenues are collected in probably the urban counties.
So the revenues go back to the counties where they're collected? Is that...
Not, they go...
Or do they do it by formula? I thought they did it by formula.
They do.
Based on percentage of A&amp;T costs, total A&amp;T costs, not just the assessor's office, to each county. So some counties may not bring in, you know, they may receive more revenue than they bring in.
Yeah, I would assume that they do than they collect. Just, all I'm saying is that I know for smaller counties, this becomes even more vital. I mean, we're able to put in general fund because we're, we balance our budget and we're generous and we contribute, right? And we realize how important the function is. I'm being funny for John's benefit. But there are counties where if they didn't have this money, they might lose their whole assessment and taxation function.
There are counties that are in, having dire problems right now. And the Department of Revenue doesn't have the funding that they need from the state either. And they support us tremendously, the property tax system. They value the centrally assessed properties. They have our oversight. They value the large, the really large industrial properties that counties don't have the capacity to value. They help us out in some court situations with defense. Without them being properly funded, that hurts all the local governments as well.
So I saw Leslie thumbing through your notebook. But if you come across a table that shows the 36 counties and what their total budgets are and what their CAFSA, I'd be interested in seeing that.
Yeah, I didn't receive one this year yet, but I can give you what I had for last year.
That would be great.
Yeah, I'm curious to see what the...
Just curious how that works.
How their rate differs also.
And we certainly are not minimizing the value of getting the dollars that we get because if we didn't get this CAFSA grant, we'd be subsidizing the entire function. And John alluded to it, but a lot of people listening may not realize that we collect the taxes for everyone when he says that it supports schools. So we're, the treasurer is distributing the money we collect back to schools, back to special districts, to cities, to all of the jurisdictions. And we just keep a very small part of it, 18% or something like that. I'm thinking back to my table in the book that we have. All right. Any other questions on this?
No, I don't. So Madam Chair, in spite of it not being as much as we might like, we're not going to turn it down and make a motion. We approve a resolution. Well, anyway, the resolution that approves the fiscal year 2018-19 County Assessment Function Funding Assistant Grant. Isn't that fun?
I'll second the motion. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
As always, excellent preparation. It was very easy to follow.
Thank you.
Board of Commissioners, consider approval of a proclamation designating April 2018 as National County Government Month in Marion County. And my name is after this one, but I thought we could just have a real brief conversation here, so I'll kick it off. It is the, I believe, the last Wednesday of April. So we are just catching this at the tail end of the month. We, as a county in Oregon, belong to the Association of Oregon Counties, as I mentioned. And as the Association of Oregon Counties, all 36 counties are also members of what they call NACO, National Association of Counties. We're 100% state. Not every state is 100% state. When we go to the conferences, we get a little ribbon that says we're 100% state. I don't know what else that buys us, but certainly it's something that NACO values. But I think the whole purpose of having National County Government Month is to highlight for the public what counties do and the valuable services that counties deliver. We have said more than once that when we go out campaigning for county commissioner, particularly, my first time, I remember knocking on doors and I got blank stares. And really, you're running for county commissioner? What does a county commissioner do? Sam's classic line, is it a full-time job? And when people ask you, what does a county commissioner do? Like I was just in the bank and a guy asked me, so you're a county commissioner? You know, it's hard to find a 30-second soundbite to explain what counties do and what the job of county commissioner is. We have 15 different departments, very diverse services, ranging from parks and roads and bridges to mental health and public health, to the county fair, to dog shelter, to the sheriff's office and jail. So when you start, and more and more and more. I'm not naming all of them, obviously. But such a range of things. And as commissioners, we oversee the departments, the budgets, the personnel rules, the contracting. And we, I usually tell people that we serve in many ways, like the governor and the legislature rolled into a three-person board with a little bit of judicial because we have quasi-judicial authority when we do land use appeals. So it's a very interesting form of government. It's a very important form of government. I served in the legislature just for one term and Commissioner Cameron served for a number of terms. And I get the question all the time, which do you like better? Do you like being county commissioner? Did you like the legislature better? And I, well, initially, I didn't really know. But now that I've been in the job in my 16th year, I definitely think that being at the county level is a lot more fun, primarily because when you're dealing in the legislature, you're dealing with words on paper. You fight and fight and fight to get words on paper through your chamber of 60 people and then another chamber of 30 people and then get the governor's signature. And then it goes into a state agency that may or may not like what it is that the words on paper said. And they'll decide whether or not they have the budget enough to do it and the staff that have enough initiative to want to do it. And so it can be a really kind of frustrating and not always that productive process. But when you are at the county level, you see the fruits of your labor every day in the work that we do on the ground to deliver services to the people of Marion County. So that, we have a video that Association of Oregon Counties developed, I'm thinking it might have been four or five years ago, that we're going to show at the tail end so that we don't interrupt the board session and keep people from business. But it really describes and kind of looks across the state of Oregon at the different counties and the services that we deliver. So that's my spiel. So what would you like to add?
Well, as usual, you take all the good stuff.
I'm sorry.
But, and I want to tell a story that I've told several times, but this comes to mind now. When I first got here, as you know, I was appointed. And it's right, it's November. We just found out November 28th. That's only important to me. Oh, they tried to shorten me a few months, but it's not apparently proved out by the record. But that doesn't matter. But anyway, so it's around the first of the year and then at New Year's, The Statesman had a big headline, a special section on the year in local government. And I thought, oh, what a wonderful opportunity to find out all the things that the county's been involved in in the next year. So I started reading it. There's a lot about the state and lots about Salem. But honestly, the county wasn't even mentioned. So I'm sitting there going, oh, well, maybe they're not too important. But then I got involved with the job and it kind of goes back to the things you're saying. I've tried to explain it, like, we're involved in some ways with maybe every human endeavor. I mean, it's law. You went through a list, but it could be geology, biology, land use. It just, I'm, for me personally, I'm always amazed I can even...
Hydrology.
Hydrology. Oh, did we love that?
Sensitive groundwater overlay, that was our favorite thing.
But anyway, after these years, I'm fully convinced that we probably touch the lives of more citizens than any other local government, truly, in services, just with the security. And you mentioned the sheriff. I just, the whole public safety system, the jail, those are all important. It's come up on the previous subject, the tax collection and accountability for all that, that takes, distributes money out throughout all of it. And there's hundreds of districts and, you know, service districts, schools, cities. So it's a pretty big and pretty important job. And I'm off the subject, but just real happy to be part of it.
John, anything you'd like to add?
You know, you mentioned that people don't know what a county commissioner does. They don't really know what a county does. And you know, the general public, they're not the only ones. The legislature doesn't know what counties do. And they think we're just a place where they can pick up money.
And assign tasks.
And assign tasks. Marion County is a statutory county, which means we function under state statutes and we have to follow those laws. But we do everything the state does. In fact, the county is really the unit of government that administers state law and state functions, from healthcare to, well, you name it. One of the things, I said the legislature doesn't know anything about counties. When I came here, I came from the legislature as a fiscal officer. And I didn't know jack about counties. I hate to tell you that.
We've tried to guide you along.
Yeah, I know.
You think you're telling us something.
I knew a lot about public finance, but I learned over time what counties do. And as Janet said, it's a lot more fun than state government, let me tell you.
So we have a proclamation in front of us. And we will make a motion to approve the proclamation, then read the proclamation. And then, as I mentioned earlier, we will run the DVD, the video, right after our last action item, after we've closed the meeting.
Madam Chair, if I could, then I would make a motion that we do approve that proclamation designating April 2018 as National County Government Month in Marion County.
I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that's approved. So would you begin?
Happily. "In the matter of a proclamation recognizing April 2018 as National County Government Month, whereas the nation's 3,069 counties serving more than 300 million Americans provide essential services to create healthy, safe, vibrant, and economically resilient communities, and whereas Marion County and all counties take pride in our responsibility to protect and enhance the health, well-being, and safety of our residents in efficient and cost-effective ways, and whereas through National Association of Counties, Safe and Secure Counties Initiative, NACO is encouraging counties to focus on strengthening the safety and security of their communities and..."
Whereas, in order to remain healthy, vibrant, safe, and economically competitive, America's counties provide public health, justice, emergency management, and economic services that play a key role in everything from residents' daily health to disaster response. And whereas each year since 1991, the National Association of Counties has encouraged counties across the country to actively promote programs and services to the public we serve. And whereas Marion County provides public services to more than 329,000 residents in 20 cities through the dedicated service of more than 1,600 full-time and part-time employees in 15 departments. Now therefore, the Marion County Board of Commissioners does hear... does hereby proclaim April 2018 as National County Government Month."
The only thing I see there that I, I don't know how you do it, it doesn't matter, but we always say twenty cities. And we, we kind of leave out that there's a number of unincorporated cities that are communities in themselves. So, I started to make a list, but the two that jump out is Brooks and Mahama. But there's several others. And of course, just...
There's a long list of them. It's in our budget book, I think, at the beginning. At least, Atesh used to put them in there. The column of unincorporated, I think, was almost longer than the column of incorporated.
And in some ways, in fact, I think about lots of ways, we have more involvement. Look at East Salem, where we essentially perform so many of their city government functions. But it doesn't matter. We do those things for all our citizens.
So, we will just by osmosis, put that thought into that line of the proclamation that we just approved. All right. Should we move on to the next item?
Fine.
Public Works has the next three items. Item number three, "Consider Approval of Amendment Number One to the Contract for Services with Republic Services, revising language related to haul destinations and recycling of appliances, and adding $2.9 million in funding." Brian May, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Brian May with Marion County Public Works, Environmental Services Division. As mentioned before you, we have an amendment to the contract with Republic Services for the hauling agreement for our North Marion Transfer Station. It also would include some changes we want to do with some Freon-containing appliances. So, to give you a little bit of background to get started, this contract has kind of restricted our ability to move material. Right now, if you're driving down I-5 from North Marion Transfer, we're only allowed to take garbage and move it to the east, to, to the waste energy facility. This amendment's going to help us with some flexibility there and allow us to move material to the Marion Resource Recovery. So, what has happened to us as the economy's grown here since, really, since 2016, we've seen some increase in volumes through all our disposal sites. And Cavana is now at what we call capacity. So, what's happened is we're starting to move material away from Cavana and seek other disposal sites. And this amendment will give us a flexibility to move materials for higher recovery and at the same time, getting more of the correct material brought into Cavana to be incinerated. When we start looking at the, the impacts and what's out there, from a financial piece, as you mentioned, we're looking for the term of the contract of $2.9 million. What that increase covers is the processing costs of moving that material to the mixed waste processing or the Marion Resource Recovery Facility. I want to note that when we talk about that increase of about $720,000 a year, that that is a pass-through expense. As part of the contract, it is established where Republic Services pays the disposal and then in turn charges us that cost back. It's worth mentioning that this would not impact our rates at our curb or at our transfer stations. We'll have increased revenue from the material that is now then able to be disposed of at the incinerator at $87.45 a ton to a equivalent of just a little over $1.2 million. So, the offset net-net is an increase of about half a million dollars to the Environmental Services Fund. The best part of that is, you know, we get more of the right material into Cavana. At the same time, we're getting some additional recovery. And, and what we've seen is an estimate of about twenty percent of the material that goes in is recovered. What we've been doing since late, or say, fall 2016, is we've been moving our Salem Kaiser Transfer Station material to the MRF or the mixed wa, or the, I always get this one mixed up, Marion Resource Recovery Facility, the MRF, the MRRF. And it's been successful. We're seeing great results by doing that. We've been getting additional volumes into Cavana, and we're seeing that additional recovery. In addition to that, we've had Republic Services at Salem Kaiser handle the appliances also, the Freon Containing. The numbers are amazing with this economy, with remodeling and just growth and housing. Our appliance counts are going through the roof at our transfer stations. So, at North Marion alone, we reached, at the end of March, the total we received the prior year as far as, you know, physical year. So, this number has not declined. And, and we want to, want to better manage that, that material as it comes through. So, that's another adjustment within this amendment. So, the overall goal is, again, flexibility to our solid waste system, allowing us to move materials to appropriate locations and also increasing our recovery rate as we move forward. So, at this point, we, we recommend approval of amendment number one to the contract with Republic Services.
Questions?
Well, I do have a number of questions, and it'd be helpful if I could read my notes, but I'll just make things up. I'm especially pleased about anything that increases a recycling count with all the challenges we're having to the whole system right now. So, that's a plus. I'm a little wondering about, it seems like when I'm by there, they seem to be full. The MRF has the capacity to handle this material, obviously, or you wouldn't be going ahead. But they must be reaching that limit as they're configured.
Correct. In working with them, they are putting on a second shift and then running additional days on the weekend to actually handle and process the material. If you go by there today, you'll start seeing kind of their, their wood waste recovery piece kind of growing. We're kind of at that slack time from an energy standpoint for the, you know, the burning of the wood, where nobody's running heaters and nobody's running the air conditioner. So, there's a little bit of surplus volume, and they're looking for some avenues to address that right now.
And is there, I know Ferris is taking some of the wood. Is that all of it? Or are they finding other places to take it? We used to take so much to Smurfit, it was called at the time, in Newburgh. And that's off.
Off, yeah. So, Ferris is the main component of that resource, where that material goes. In talking with Kevin Hines, the general manager, they're exploring a couple of other options for just short-term for that flux, and then figure that Ferris will be able to handle the rest of their material.
And then, I would have thought this was the direction of material that you mentioned. It's kind of new to, to me that we didn't have the ability to direct it quite what we wanted. But it still leaves, do we have the ability, say, say the MRF is full? The burner's full or down could happen. That we, is there in this or in the previous agreements enough to just take it wherever most likely Coffin-Butte? Is that set up in this? Not a problem?
Yep. We still have that flexibility to move material with our flow as needed, yep, to Coffin-Butte.
I don't know why I want to say this, but I used to have that contract myself for moving the appliances, but also tires. And I haven't heard anything about tires for a long time. How was, how was that going? Are we still taking those? And what are we doing with them?
Yeah. So, the tires are actually handled under the contract with the Salem Kaiser Transfer Station. They are collected. We definitely want people to bring them in and avoid putting them in the roadside ditches. There's a small fee per tire. They're collected and then transported to a recycler.
And do you know what they, they used to grind them and use them for fuel? I'm just curious.
That's the primary use of, for still today.
Okay. I think that's all I've got.
All right. And we did sort of talk about this in the context of the financing of the system when we had that work session recently. So, I recall that.
And, and maybe worth noting, since we had our SWAMAC meeting last night, we had a presentation from a company starting up out in Turner, American Gypsum Recycling, that are going, is going to start taking clean wallboard and has a system to take the paper off and recover that material for ag purposes. They've got a lot of interest within the county and outside of the county. So, we're excited to have that presentation last night. And again, some additional material, instead of being put through our process and taken out to Brown's Island, we'll actually be able to recover that material also.
All right. So, I'm hoping they're successful, but I can't help but interject a story. It's probably 1985, Island City out of La Grande put in a recycling procedure for Sheet Rock, invited all the local dignitaries, turned the button on. Everybody there was covered in dust. Kind of something blew up. And that's kind of the last I'd heard about it for now twenty-five or thirty years. So, I do wish them better luck.
They, they've already done a great job in not inviting everybody for when they turn the machine on.
I won't be attending.
Yeah. And it's good and successful. Their pilots from last week are looking very good, and they're already shipping product out.
We get recycling tonnage credit under that?
Definitely.
So, that's, that's helpful, too. And it is back to a true use. It meets my requirements for what recycling really is. So, I really, I joke about it, but I hope they're successful.
You bet.
So, Madam Chair, if I could, I would make a motion that we do approve amendment number one to the Contract for Services with Republic Services, revising language related to haul destinations and recycling of appliances, and add $2,900,000 in funding.
And I will second the motion. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item, "Consider Adoption of an Administrative Ordinance Granting Zone Change Conference of Plan Amendment Case Number Seventeen-Dash-Zero-Zero-Three-R-N-Q Properties LLC, Clerk's File Number Fifty-seven Thirty-nine." Joe Fenimore.
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is an application to change the conference of plan designation from multifamily residential to commercial in the zone from multifamily residential to commercial retail on a .14-acre parcel in the 3,400 block of Ward Drive Northeast. Hearings officer held a hearing on this application on November eighth and on January twelfth, 2018, issued a report recommending the board approve the request subject to conditions. The board held a hearing, public hearing, on February twenty-eighth, considered all the evidence in the record and approved the request subject to the conditions recommended by the hearings officer. The conditions require the applicant to obtain all necessary permits and to meet all the development standards of the code. The ordinance and findings have been prepared, and notice of adoption was given on April eighteenth. The ordinance is now set for formal adoption. You have the option of adopting the ordinance as written, direct staff to repair a modified ordinance, or choose not to adopt the ordinance at this time. And I'll be happy to try to answer any questions.
All right. My computer just froze. There we go. What is that? It's the last one. Do you have any questions?
No, I'm just trying to remind myself what this was about.
Yeah, that's what I was looking up on the, there it is. Okay.
This was the highway trailer sales on Portland Road and Ward Drive, and they wanted to expand an area to, for additional storage.
Okay.
And this was a little small piece adjacent, sliver piece adjacent to it.
So, did we have a, we had a public hearing on this, but it was the one that was really quick and, and easy? So, it just took a few minutes, which is why it didn't burn into our brains, right?
Correct.
And so, this is the opportunity, then, to come back and actually put this into the ordinance so that they can go forward and do what we approved. All right. So, should be easy?
It should be. No, I'm, I'm going to make a motion, but then I want to just make a comment after we're done. Madam Chair, I would make a motion that we accept the recommendation from staff that we adopt the attached ordinance, ordinance as written, including those conditions referred to.
Okay. I'll second the motion. Discussion. You said you had a comment.
Oh, I can do it here. I don't know. It's just, I just wish, I wish we'd give more thought. I don't want to, it should be after we vote. Somehow, it just plays me wrong that in a time when, when any housing seems to be in such short supply that we take any ground away from housing. Just, just something that like, I just want to say it to, to remind myself to look for that and perhaps ask others as we move on. I don't, I'm not even capable of putting it in context of this particular subject.
All right.
Okay.
It was a philosophical comment.
Was it?
Yes.
Wow, I've never done that.
Doesn't, it's not a huge piece of property.
Very, very small.
Right, yeah. All right. So, we have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's approved. You know, just with regard, before we go to the last item with your, so I was listening to the Gator and Denise show last night, and Bill Groul was on there.
Oh, you know, I heard it, too. Wanted to bring it up. Yes.
Yeah, and talking about the Department of Justice opinion that is not allowing inspectors to be from the private sector. And, and they were really focusing on the idea about how it slows down housing development in this time of a housing shortage. And so, I thought it was really a very compelling discussion.
I heard it, too, and wanted to bring it up at the end of the meeting. And it didn't have one idea that we may look at or ask that we look at something with the legislature to, to help to make that change. You know, it kind of, we were at a point, it's really a problem in Marion County with, with septic inspectors. It's much better now. Back there, a long visit with Putney, Matt Putney, who we've hired. It's under control now. But we were looking at, at perhaps what else could we do? And, and we shouldn't be precluded from being able to do that, to hire somebody with competence, oversee them, give them that authority. So, I think it's something we need to look at.
Yeah. Well, it sounded like the League of Cities was involved in a number of different organizations, which is good. But unfortunate that the timeframe that they gave them was so short that they really don't have a lot of options.
Didn't get what their system's going to be without it, so...
Yeah. Well, they, the default is you contract with the state, building codes. That's what he was saying at the beginning, that there's not enough time for them to do anything but that. And so, their belief was that the, the whole gist of it was that people would be...
Force it.
Yeah, required to go with the state. But the problem that they run into there is a lot of delays. You know, that when they have their own folks up at their, locally, they can get there same day as opposed to waiting three days, five days, two weeks, or whatever it is.
So, I don't know quite how this works, but I, it's my understanding that some cities use the county, too. I'm pretty sure Sublimity does and did. So, I don't be, want to be competing against somebody, but...
Right. That's, that is an option, but we, our capacity may not be that we could do everybody either, so... I don't know. Interesting. Anyway, we digress. Let's move to item number five. "Receive and Consider Appeal of Hearings Officer's Decision Denying Conditional Use Eighteen-Dash-Zero-Zero-Two-Lind." This is Clerk's File Number Fifty-seven Forty-two, and the recommendation is to schedule a public hearing for May sixteenth, 2018. Joe.
Okay. For the record, again, this is Joe Fenimore. This item was a conditional use to establish a hemp oil processing facility as a home occupation on a 6.7-acre parcel in a special agriculture zone located on Orville Road South. A little bit of background on this case, in August 2017, a conditional use application signed by Stephen Lind was filed to establish a hemp oil processing facility as a commercial activity in conjunction with farm use. It became clear that, that the proposal would not meet the criteria for that type of facility, so they modified the proposal to make it a conditional use for a home occupation. The modified request was approved by the planning director and was appealed to the hearings officer by opponents. The hearings officer held a hearing on that matter, and at that hearing, the applicant identified the sole owner of the property as Martha Lind. The hearings officer concluded that at some point after the application was filed, before the hearing was held, the ownership of the property changed. And since the application was not signed by Martha Lind, it was not a valid application, and issued an order dismissing the case. During the appeal period, the applicant chose to withdraw the case and file this new application, which is before you today. This home occupation application was filed and signed by Martha Lind and sent directly to the hearings officer. The hearings officer conducted a public hearing on January thirty-first and on March twentieth, issued a decision denying the request. On April third, the hearings officer's decision was appealed to the board. In the denial, the hearings officer found that one of the approval criterion required the home occupation to be operated by the resident of the dwelling on the property in which the business is located. In this instance, the hemp extraction business, LNL Extractions, it is, is LNL Extractions. The applicant, Martha Lind, is, is the resident of the dwelling. However, she is not a member of the company. She is just an employee, a paid employee. Since the resident of the dwelling is not the operator of the business, the proposed home occupation did not satisfy that criterion and was denied. In the appeal, the applicant indicates that LNL Extractions has amended their articles in the corporation to add Martha Lind as secretary and to retain equal and full operational control over the company. Therefore, she can now be considered an operator, an operator of the business and satisfy the criterion. You have the usual options we give you, accept the appeal and remand the matter back to the hearings officer, accept the appeal and schedule a public hearing, which we suggested, May sixteenth, deny the appeal and uphold the hearings officer's decision denying the request. And as you said, staff recommend that you accept the appeal and schedule a hearing.
So, my question is, why would we not remand it back to the hearings officer?
One item that came out was, that is an option. I just, there are opponents. There was a, a letter sent into the hearings officer after the close of the record. It is sealed and put in, in the file with instructions that if the board decides to, to have an appeal, to go ahead and, and let you decide whether you want to look at that information or not.
So, you're, we're doing it to the board because someone sent a letter in late?
Well...
I don't think that's a good reason. So, so, I mean, it just seems, let me just say. It seems to me, and I read through this last night, it's been a long time since we've done a home occupations case at the board level. It just feels to me like the home occupation is somebody that's living in a house that's a massage therapist or doing a beauty parlor or whatever. This feels like a company looking for a way through county to do something on property that's, that they reside in or whatever. But it doesn't feel like a clean fit. And so, I'm not entirely excited about bringing that... And so, I'm not entirely excited about bringing that level of technicality here to the board level without having someone else review this and say, does it pass muster, especially when the whole thing was denied? And, you know, even reading through the documents that they sent and the meandering language about, uh, you know, why this was now okay, it just, I, it's not straightforward, and so this is why I'm asking you the question.
All right. The hearings officer did look at all the other criteria.
Yeah, I got, I got that.
And, and that, that was the reason that I recommend the board accept the appeal.
But I'm not, I'm not convinced that this then solves it, I want the hearings officer to do a legal review and say, is this really aligned with the intent and scope of the home occupations ordinance? If you have an LLC and you have several people in it, and is she, you know, she, is she sitting there doing the work by herself? Or is it a company running it, because you're supposed to have like no employees or just a few employees, you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
I mean, it's, uh, it, it just concerned me when I read it, it, and then when I heard you say that they tried to do the conditional use in conjunction with farm use and couldn't do that, so amended it so that it was this, so this is kinda like their fallback. I'm just not sure, and, and I don't have the expertise to be able to, to, to discern how it fits within our parameters, so that's my feeling, but anyway.
Well, I agree, and was gonna go that way too, but I don't know where I'll ever find out. Something doesn't feel quite right, uh, you, you give, put somebody's name on an LLC, well, do they have a percentage of ownership, do they have any control? I can't hardly, if I got one, one share of General Motor Stock, I can't go make applications for them, something doesn't kinda feel right.
Yeah, it just felt really odd to me.
It was not an easy recommendation to make, I struggled with this one.
Okay, well, since you struggled with it, we'll just override you and do something different, okay?
I tried to turn the paper without a recommendation, I was told I had to make one.
That's why they pay you the big bucks, Joseph. All right, so are you game with doing the, the remand?
Yes.
Cause I, I just think it needs another look, given what we've got, so.
Just remind me, so even after that decision, will it come back to us for some final approval, how's that work again?
Now, I'm gonna ask you to
If it's appealed, right?
If it's appealed.
Oh, if it's appealed.
I assume you want the remand to look at the entire case and not just this one issue? Now, I would strongly recommend that, because there is other evidence that was added that wasn't considered.
Okay.
So instead of like we did on the one case where we looked at just the one
Right.
item, I think the remand should, it should be open to the
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Just wanted to clarify that.
And time wise, it's probably not any slower or quicker to go with the hearings officer, right?
Correct.
Be about, it'd be about the same.
Yes.
And then if, then there could be an appeal that has after that. What happens to the money that they paid to file the appeal, do they get that back?
I, I, it's, I don't know how the court office, court office
Okay, well, anyway, maybe you can figure that out, make sure that, that, especially if they were, here's the scenario, if they were to be denied and then want to appeal it again, I wouldn't want them having to pay twice, okay? So can you kinda look into that and make sure?
I will see how that works, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I'll try to.
All right, I'm gonna try this, I didn't quite capture your language, Joe, but I'm gonna make a motion that we accept the appeal and remand the entire matter back to the hearings officer.
And I'll second the motion. All right, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that concludes our agenda for today, except for the DVD, hang on, and everybody can see that, I'll read the Wednesday to Wednesday calendar, it's got a lot of stuff on it. We're just concluding our Wednesday board session, April twenty fifth, uh, at, uh, it says nine to one, but I think this is gonna be noon to one, it's kind of a long lunch, right? We're, we're gonna have a luncheon at Quan's for Administrative Professionals Day this evening, it's from six to seven thirty is Santee M. Awards Night at Santee M. High School Auditorium, two sixty five Evergreen Street in Mill City.
Are you singing again?
I am not singing there, no. Are you?
No.
On, tomorrow, April twenty sixth, Thursday, seven thirty in the morning is the city, schools, and county quarterly breakfast at three ten Water Street, uh, North Water Street in Silverton at a restaurant there. Uh, on April twenty sixth, Thursday at noon is the community forum with Woodburn Rotary, Legacy Health Center, Woodlands Room, fourteen seventy five Mount Hood Avenue in Woodburn. At four o'clock is Jim Thompson's retirement celebration out of the Public Works on Silverton Road. On Monday, April thirtieth, start the day with calendar review at eight thirty in the Silverton Conference Room, fifth floor here at Courthouse Square, followed by management update at nine, followed by the Marion County Public Safety Coordinating Council Planning Meeting at eleven, all of those in the Silverton Conference Room, followed by a one thirty to two thirty one-on-one with Department Head Jane Votto at the Silverton Conference Room. Then on Tuesday, May the first, at one, from one thirty to three thirty is a Detroit Fish, Fish Passage Project at the State and Community Center at four hundred West Virginia Street in Staton. And then one week from today, uh, Wednesday, May second, at nine AM, we will not be back here in the Senator Hearing Room for Board Session, instead, we will be up at Shampui at their visiting, Visitor Center, seventy six seventy nine Shampui Road Northeast in St. Paul to celebrate the one hundred seventy-fifth anniversary of Marion County. And that will be followed at noon by our monthly Woodburn Marion County Lunch Meeting at Louisa's Taqueria, five twenty-three Front Street in Woodburn. And in the evening at five thirty is a Marion County Fair Board Meeting in the Commissioners Boardroom on the fifth floor at Courthouse Square.
One thing on that list, I, I thought you would advise Jane that it's not really one-on-one.
It's not one-on-one, it's usually three-on-one or five-on-one, that's how, or four-on-one, depending on if
So I don't want her to turn me overconfident.
Right, yeah.
Have with me, I won't.
Right, yeah, you're, you're gonna be vastly outnumbered, so don't come with a misunderstanding there. Anything else?
Well, you mentioned in the calendar, I don't know when the real day is, but we're selling
It is the real day.
It is the real day.
We are doing it on the real day. It's so wonderful.
So I like that. And then my personal deal, we have a visit from, I talked about her before, a granddaughter from Boston, eighteen month old Big Quinn is at the house right now, so. I was telling the story, I won't get into the whole one, I was bragging how all my kids were close to you, and within an hour, I got the word they're moving to Boston, that still troubles me. Did you do something, was it jealousy?
No, no, I didn't, no, I did not, I was, my vibes might have been there, but
All right.
I don't think I'm that powerful.
Anyway, they're visiting. Looking forward to seeing her.
Yeah, well, I mentioned Monday night I went to the city council meeting, we talked about that briefly, it was a very lengthy meeting, I ended up leaving, I think around ten thirty, or ten fifteen, and they were just wrapping up, uh, and then they left the record open, but very interesting land use case, and I really, in, in addition just to the issue that, that I was there for, it's interesting to see how other jurisdictions handle land use presentations and how the staff sets it up and how they organize it and all of that, learned a lot from that, so it was good.
Did they, um, the reason I was watching it, I was interested in their truly a demand to the SCATS Committee to include their environmental concerns, was that in a consent item?
It was in consent.
So they did a couple little pre?
Linda Walmark made some comments and they had people stand up and then when they
The councilors never discussed it, they just passed it on as a consent?
Well, there were, I think, two people that voted no on that consent item, Brad Nanki being one of them.
Okay.
Jim Lewis possibly being the second.
So the entire bunch showed up, and I thought we'd have some people to make a public comment this morning, they all showed up at the SCATS meeting and truly demanded, and I probably didn't accept it well, but that's how I am.
So what do they, what, what happened in the end, did they vote on it, or?
Yes, uh, let me think how it really ended. I had some language that I added or suggested, the staff's gonna come back and try to rewrite, try to compromise, try to, um, well, my thought was, don't say carbon, don't say climate change, just say we're against pollution, for example, something along that line. And I think everybody there's, uh, fine with that, I just, and I mentioned that, you know, carbon can be one of those, but it isn't the main driving in my way of thinking anyway, and I don't wanna be bound under that lens. So maybe there'll be a compromise that works for everybody, but the tone and, I, I use the word arrogance out loud a couple times, but that's how I felt. Sorry.
No, no, it's okay. Interesting, I was just curious how it, how it ended up.
It's, there's possibilities to work for everybody.
Right. Well, shall we move on to the video?
Fine.
All right, so we're going to adjourn the meeting, and then we're going to have the video about counties.
What does county government do? Well, uh, I don't really know, but I think they might have something to do with the roads, or maybe the schools. You don't really see them very much, and you don't hear from the county government too much.
Hi, I'm Eric Schmidt, and I live in Washington County, Oregon, and it looks like I just got my property tax bill from the county. Like a lot of taxpayers, I'm not all that fond of paying taxes, especially property taxes. But I do know that my property taxes help Washington County provide vital public services for my family and my neighbors. Washington County is one of the four original Oregon counties, formed in eighteen forty-three as Tewolite County. The territorial legislature changed the name in eighteen forty-nine to honor our nation's first president. There were nineteen other Oregon counties providing vital public services before Oregon became a state in eighteen fifty-nine. In twenty-first century Oregon, there are thirty-six counties, each with a history as compelling and interesting as my home county, and each with as an important mission as my home county. Oregon counties are an important part of the delivery of vital public services. As partners with the state of Oregon, Oregon counties ensure that Oregonians can live together in comfort and safety.
I'm not really sure that what the state does and what the cities do and what the counties do, how they're, how the things are separated.
What do you know about county government?
Not a whole lot.
Hmm, I don't get too involved with that county government thing, so I, I'm not really a good one to ask about the county government.
Do you think it's common that people don't know too much about county government?
It's very common.
I think it is.
We represent all different people that have all different understandments of county government.
It is local, it's close to the people, it is in touch with what's happening close to the ground.
We are the tool of, of implementation from all levels of government, federal, state, local.
County governments provide a broad range of services, from health to public safety, uh, to, uh, the clerk's office and recording and land use, and, uh, it is the broader, most effective form of government that I know of.
Do you know what county government does for you? The roads, water, things like that, land.
I notice the law enforcement, the public safety issues, the road department, uh, planning, uh, public health.
I'm pleased with what they're doing.
Absolutely, they affect you.
So what do counties do? The Association of Oregon Counties has produced this video to provide some answers to that oft-asked question. Let's begin with the property tax bill. Seventeen cents of every dollar Oregonians pay in property tax, on the average, goes to support the functions of their county governments. The rest of the property taxes go to cities, special districts, bonds, and of course, schools. Counties make good use of their share of those property taxes. Government does a lot. The green boxes on this chart show the services the state of Oregon provides exclusively. The blue boxes show the services Oregon counties provide exclusively. The red boxes show the services the state and the counties provide together. It's quite a list. On that list is law enforcement. Back in the days before Oregon was a state, counties made sure there were jails for lawbreakers and jailers to keep an eye on the lawbreakers. These days, every Oregon county has an elected sheriff. In most counties, the sheriff hires deputies who patrol the county, arresting bad guys, keeping the peace, and providing aid during emergencies.
The sheriff is the chief law enforcement officer of the county, so they're responsible for all the law enforcement services that occur in the county. There's also some other statutorily mandated requirements that include the issuing of concealed handgun permits, civil, which is court enforcement, the processing and serving of various court papers such as restraining orders, eviction notices, foreclosures, et cetera. Also, in some counties, emergency management is statutorily required, and that's placed with the sheriff's office, and that's the way it occurs in Benton County. The jail is also statutorily mandated and is the responsibility of the sheriff's office as well, so we have many different and varied responsibilities, not just law enforcement.
Mary Paul Two Three will be out at the county.
The American sheriff is the only one that answers directly to the citizens. We are the people's cops, and it's because we are elected, and the only elected member of law enforcement in the United States, in fact, in the world. The American sheriff is the only one that answers directly to the citizens that take the interest in voting and participating.
Another important function of county government is community corrections, parole and probation.
Community corrections really provides all the services that are for probation or parole. So, in Yumitilla County, for instance, we supervise about a thousand offenders on any given day, and across the state of Oregon, it's thirty thousand plus. We have some results that would indicate that our recidivism rate is lower now, since the counties took over than it was when the state operated the program.
In the days before statehood, counties also provided a form of help for people in need. This now popular gathering spot in Monoma County was once the county's poor farm. Today, Oregon counties provide for people in need in many, many ways. One of those ways is the vital public service of public health. In addition to making sure that restaurants are safe to eat in and children get their shots, Oregon counties also make sure that those with mental health needs and challenges, and those who are addicted to drugs and alcohol have the help they need to recover and lead productive lives.
Government at work every day. We're always working with our commissioners, um, if we have an outbreak, if we have, um, a foodborne illness, we're tracking that down and trying to, um, find out what the cause was so we can make sure and keep people healthy.
Oregon counties provide public and mental health services because those services are best provided at the local level. The state of Oregon recognizes how important the local delivery of vital public services is, how cost-effective it can be, and how it produces results for those who need the services. This often involves an intense deliberative process, needs versus resources.
The more people that are vaccinated, the less amount, amount of disease there's gonna be out there. Part of the reason we're doing this clinic is to help children in the area be able to get access to that vaccine, so not everybody has health insurance or access to a doctor, so we're here to kinda help those people out.
To be a long-term acute bed care facility.
Oregon counties also coordinate services for the state's developmentally disabled population. Most motorists and truckers don't really pay attention to whether they're on a highway, road, or street that was built and maintained by the state, a county, or a city.
With the price of oil, we just can't afford to keep them up.
Your residents of Gillum County expect pretty good roads, don't they?
They would like to keep them as good as possible.
Is that easy to do?
Everybody's road is the most important road.
Oregon counties are responsible for nearly twenty-six thousand miles of roadway. That's nearly two-thirds of the integrated system of city streets, county roads, and state highways. The county road system has thirty-four hundred bridges and approximately twenty-six thousand culverts. The backbone of the county road system, both in terms of mileage and in terms of time, effort, and expense to maintain and operate, is the collector's system of roads.
In my early years, the number one road district here had about twenty people at the time, now we're down to under ten, you know? And, uh, we still have exactly the same amount of road miles to take care of with less money, less people, and getting the money on the ground, if it's gonna be federal money or state money, has been problematic.
Oregon county clerks are busy people, they provide many of the services that bring Oregonians face-to-face with their county governments.
Well, our main duties in here are recording the real estate records, also elections, conducting all the elections for all the districts and the county, the state, the federal government, and we issue passports, we're actually the accepting agent for the passports. We issue marriage licenses, domestic partnerships, we file all the probate records.
Every Oregon county has a board of county commissioners or a county court. The board or court has the authority to adopt the county's annual budget, negotiate contracts, hire employees, enact policies and procedures for the delivery of public services, and make land use decisions. County commissioners and judges have executive, legislative, and some judicial functions.
It's the essentials of running a community that, that are not visible, not popular, but very necessary.
County government is the most effective form of government there is.
Why?
Because we are the ones that actually, where the rubber hits the road, as it said, we're the ones that implement policy, we're the ones that make it happen, we're the ones that deliver state and federal policies on the ground.
The diversity of Oregon's thirty-six counties is the strength of a great state.
Traveling around the state of Oregon, looking at different county governments.
Traveling around the state of Oregon and looking at different county governments, when you've seen one county government in Oregon, you've seen one county government in Oregon.
Being able to tailor the delivery of vital public services to individual county needs allows more flexibility and efficiency in the delivery of those services. What works in Mownoma County might not work in Malheur County, and vice versa. Because it is so close to the people, county government can offer the flexibility, efficiency, and response Oregonians need and deserve.
I've heard it best saying that we take care of the naughtiest and the neediest in our community.
Oregon is a beautiful state, and her counties are committed to maintaining and enhancing a unique quality of life. County government in Oregon today continues to evolve as it has since 1843. Oregon is a role model for county government across the nation. We've shown you several vital public services provided by Oregon counties. There are more, many more.
All right, can I take a look at a couple of your life jackets?
More often than not, Oregonians rely on their county governments when there's been a disruption in their daily lives.
I think mostly the citizens don't really know. They're not aware of all the things county governments do until they get into a little trouble, maybe, or they get in need.
It takes a partnership to fund and implement the programs. The state and federal government, by and large, they rely on county government to implement those programs.
By partnering with the state, Oregon counties are able to bring vital public services to Oregonians more efficiently and effectively. The state benefits from the flexibility offered by Oregon's counties.
Without county government in place in its various forms, the partnership wouldn't exist because the mechanism for delivering the services would not be in place. And so they'd have to invent something else to do it.
In this whole process, you know, state legislatures and congressmen and senators, they rely heavily on what goes on at the county level.
In terms of delivery of services, this county government is where it all comes together.
One minute I'll be having to deal with transportation issues, and it'll switch to land use. Then I'll have to be talking to our human services director of policy decisions dealing with, you know, children and families, or again, social service delivery systems. Or I'll have to have a conversation with my sheriff about public safety, or my district attorney, you know, the folks that we work with as other electives. I like it, the challenge, because you have to know a lot, you have to be able to switch gears quickly, you have to understand things quickly, and, you know, it's never a dull moment. That's why I enjoy it.